All this meeting to order, let's start off with the roll call, please, Jason.
Council President Perez.
Here.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Here.
Councilmember Benedetti.
Here.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Here.
Councilmember McGurven.
Here.
Okay. Councilmember Prince. Councilmember Corman. Okay, Mr. Mayor, two absent, but I believe Mr. Corman will be joining us. There he is.
He's joined us.
Okay.
Here.
There he is, okay. So I believe we just have one absent, then, Mr. Prince.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council, Councilmember O'Halloran.
I move that we excuse Councilmember Prince.
Second. It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran and seconded by Councilmember McGurven that we excuse the absent council member. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. First up, we have a proclamation.
Okay, proclamation. Parks and Recreation Month. One moment. Okay, proclamation. Whereas since 1985, Americans have celebrated Parks and Recreation Month in July to promote the importance, uh, to promote the importance of parks, trails, and recreation have in health and well-being, conservation, and social equity. And whereas every day in communities across the city, parks and recreation professionals are providing essential services and making their communities better places to live, work, and play. And whereas community services department personnel are on the front line in the battle against the COVID-19 pandemic, homelessness, substance abuse disorders, the obesity epidemic, and other chronic health issues. And whereas the services that parks and recreation professionals provide are vital for our community, protecting open space and natural resources, and providing activities and resources for all people. And whereas the Tree Canopy in Renton Parks provides quantifiable ecological benefits of cleaner air and water and energy saved. Renton includes 82 acres of Tree Canopy and has been designated a Tree City USA for 12 consecutive years. And whereas parks reduce the impact of large storms and flooding by serving as sponges that soak up runoff from nearby paved surfaces during rain events, which in turn prevents flooding and decreases property damage. And whereas Renton Parks and Natural Area support both plant and animal biodiversity, which offer important educational opportunities, and support overall ecosystem functionality. Whereas the city of Renton recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources and appreciates the frontline staff who, every day, make these spaces safe, engaging, and accessible to the public. Now therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the city of Renton, do hereby proclaim July 2020 to be Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Renton, and I encourage all members of the community to join me in this special observance and witness whereof. I have here to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Renton to be affixed this 6th day of July 2020. Signed, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the city of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President Perez.
I move to adopt the proclamation as read.
Second. It's been moved by Council President Perez and seconded by Councilmember Corman that we adopt the proclamation as read. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, proclamation passes. So here to accept the proclamation, we have our own Colleen Hunsaker and Mary Jane Van Cleve, I believe. Yeah, there they are. Welcome.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you very much.
Well, Colleen, would you like to say a few words about, uh, it's being Parks Month, please?
Yes, I wanted to say that with the COVID pandemic, I think we have all come to realize better, more than before, about how important parked trails and programs are to the public. And, um, and how friends stay connected with each other and with their communities through the, what we offer. And I really wanted to appreciate the frontline staff who are out there every day and our city leaders who have helped us make very intentional decisions every step of the way as we, um, as we safe start back into regular routines.
Fantastic.
Mary Jane?
Mary Jane?
Hi, just wanted to say thank you to the public for being patient as we adapt our operations. Thank you to council for all your support while we modify the operations, and we will continue to provide quality services to the public. So thank you for just taking the time to acknowledge what we do and the value we bring and the support that we sincerely appreciate from you as council and you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, we really do have amazing parks in Renton, and I, sometimes I think we even take it for granted a little bit. And this sure is a reminder when we can't, uh, we can't use them or now trying to get them back open. So thank you very, very much. Appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you for having us.
Okay, next we have administrative report.
Okay, administrative report. I have two items. Mr. Mayor, the city of Renton is distributing face masks, face masks free to residents to help combat the spread of COVID-19. Distribution will take place every Wednesday and Thursday through the end of July while supplies last. Mask distribution will take place at the Renton Community Center, 1715 Maple Valley Highway from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. on Wednesdays and 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. on Thursdays. Residents are asked to drive to the building's main entrance, and each vehicle will receive two five mask packets. Uh, there'll be no proof of residence required, and we ask that you only pass through once. Renton seniors picking up lunches at the Renton Senior Activity Center as part of the senior lunch program will also receive masks. And secondly, the Renton's annual water quality report was published June 30th and may be found at rentonwa.gov/waterquality. The Federal Safe Drinking Water Act requires that water utilities provide an annual consumer confidence report. In this report, water utility customers can read about their water source and treatment, how the city complies with strict water standards, and learn water-saving techniques. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Jason. And I'm going to back up one. It looks like we skipped over public hearing. So we do have a public hearing about the Graves' annexation, and with us is Angie White.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council members and Mr. Mayor. I'm here to present on the Graves' annexation. This annexation is at 60% process. So the annexation process is actually a really long process, and you can see that we are here back with you. We came back initially with, at the 10% phase, and you authorized the petitioner to circulate that 60% petition that has been submitted to King County, and they have certified that that is indeed a valid petition. And so we are now here having the public hearing with you, and hopefully you'll recommend that we can note, uh, advance the notice of intent to the King County Boundary Review Board for their consideration. So this public hearing is required by state law, and you can either accept or reject the annexation. If you do accept the annexation, you can accept all of the area that's been proposed for annexation, or just a portion of the area that's been proposed. So by way of background, this is in the East Plateau area, and it's a very rectangular-shaped annexation area that you can see there. As stated, it's in the East Plateau Community Planning Area. The size is about 21.4 acres. The current uses are single-family, vacant, and there is a church located within the area. The boundaries to the north are Southeast 128th or Northeast 4th Street in Renton. To the east, 162nd Avenue Southeast. To the south, Southeast 130th. And the west uses parcel lines in Northeast, 156th Avenue Southeast. Here's an aerial shot of the annexation area. And towards the middle here, you can see where the church takes up a large portion of this annexation area. The existing conditions, and we always try to look at critical areas, there are no regulated slopes within this annexation area or streams. However, there are two wetlands, one that lies to the north of it, it's approximately 340 feet away from the annexation area, and one that lies to the east, approximately 475 feet to the east. Public services, the Renton Fire Authority currently serves this area, and they would continue to do that if the annexation proceeds. Utilities, it's served by Water District 90 and Renton Sewer Utility, neither one of those would change with annexation. And it's in Issaquah School District, which would also not change if the area annexes. The King County land use designations and zoning of this area are, the land use designation is urban residential medium, which allows a range of between four and 12 dwelling units per acre, and they have zoned this area R4. The King, or the, excuse me, the Renton land use designation for this area is residential low density, which allows a range of between resource conservation, one dwelling unit per acre, or four dwelling units per acre with the R1 or the R4. This area was pre-zoned in 2007, and it was pre-zoned with R4 zoning, and that zoning would become effective upon annexation. We always review our city policies regarding annexation. Our comprehensive plan calls for us to promote annexation where and when it's in our best interest, to support annexation where the infrastructure and services allow for urban densities, and that we always consider the fiscal impacts. The Boundary Review Board criteria and objectives, they always want to make sure that we're using physical boundaries, including but not limited to bodies of water, highways, and land contours. Use this proposed annexation uses parcel lines and roads, and those are perfectly acceptable physical boundaries. They also call to prevent irregular boundaries for annexations, being that this is almost exactly a rectangle, it's a very regular boundary. They call for the creation or preservation of logical service areas, and these service areas are previously agreed to, agreed to and are unchanged. And the annexation is of an unincorporated area to a city that is urban in character, and Renton is an urban city. The fiscal analysis for this proposed annexation, currently there are 15 dwelling units within this annexation area and an estimated 36 residents. It's estimated that there's the capacity for an additional 10 dwelling units within the area and an additional 24 residents. We always assume that the costs increase 3.3% annually, and that revenue increases are limited to 2.5% annually for sales tax, utility tax, and the franchise fees. So currently, at the existing revenues, it's estimated there's about $21,000 in revenue, and that the costs are about $21,000. They're pretty closely matched. In year 10, it's estimated revenues would be about $38,000, and costs would be about $40,000. So a little bit of a deficit there in year 10. And then Capital Enterprise Funds, current revenue is about $6,300, with costs at about $5,400. And by year 10, about $13,000 revenue for the Capital Enterprise Funds with about $12,000 in costs. We always circulate these proposed annexations amongst the different city functions, and city staff have reviewed those and have no, indicated that there are no concerns and that they are a logical extension of their services. In conclusion, this proposed annexation is in the best interest and general welfare of the city. It's consistent with our adopted annexation policies, it's consistent with the Boundary Review Board criteria, and it is a logical extension of our services. So administration recommends that the council accept this 60% direct petition to annex and authorize the administration to forward the notice of intent to the Boundary Review Board. And that's all that I have.
Thank you, Angie. Any discussion amongst the council? Okay, seeing none. Jason, do we have any correspondence?
We have no correspondence, Mr. Mayor.
And Julia, is anybody on the line wishing to speak to this public hearing?
Uh, for the record, my name is Julia Medzigian. I'm the city council liaison. I do have one person signed up in advance to speak. That will be Terry DeForre. When I unmute you, you'll have five minutes to address council. Go ahead, Mr. DeForre. Mr. DeForre? Okay, I have, uh...
Oh, can you hear me now?
I can hear you now. Go ahead.
All right. I said I, I'm the applicant. I just wanted to thank the council for, and the city for all their work. This has been a very smooth process, and we think it's good for the city and good for the, the general population within the annexation area. So that's really all I have. And it's amazing that this meeting has been held this way. So I hope everyone is safe. And really all I have. Thanks.
All right. Um, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the council regarding the Graves' annexation public hearing? I have three people with raised hands. Let's go with the first one, Krista Strasba. You are unmuted. Go ahead.
Good evening. My comment isn't directly about this comment. Should I wait?
Yes, you should wait till the next audience comment, period.
Okay, I'm happy to do that. Thank you.
Uh, I also have ADI, Adi. Do you want to speak to the Graves' annexation public hearing?
Hi, am I audible?
Go ahead.
Yeah. Hi, this is Adi here. I have just one question about this annexation. I live in the corner of 162nd and 130th Street. If this annexure, do you plan to put any footpaths around the, around this annexation area and improve any of the living conditions over here? Would that be in the plan?
Um, actually, this is comment, period. We can have staff contact you after the meeting if you give Ms. Medzigian your information. But now's the time to give us your, um, your thought.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I was not able to hear the last minute, last sentence of yours.
Oh, this is an opportunity for you to testify. So, um, please, counsel your thoughts regarding to the annexation.
Yeah, overall, I'd be happy to, for the, to be annexured, and it would definitely improve the conditions over here. I was just looking to see if there is, if there are, if you, if there are any plans to put any footpaths around, and also improve the rainwater flow through the streets. That's what I have. And if those things, if those things would be improved, that would be really helpful as well.
Okay, and I have, uh... Um, a phone number, last four digits, 4560. If you'd like to speak to the Graves' annexation, go ahead.
Hi, Julia, this is Diane Dobson, and I was premature with my raise of hand. I'm here for public comment.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, uh, I have nobody else with a raised hand to speak to the public hearing? Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Ms. Medzigian. Okay, what's the wish of the council?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, council.
Um, first, yeah, this is Randy. First, I'd like to just ask if, if we can just be sure that we get the gentleman's information to answer his question. And then, secondarily, I'd like to move that the public hearing be closed. Second?
Hey, it's been moved by Councilmember Corman, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the public hearing be closed. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay.
And then, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Um, I would then like to move that we accept the 60% direct petition to annex and authorize the administration to forward the notice of intent to the Boundary Review Board. Second?
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Corman, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the council approve the 60% annexation. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Angie. Okay, next we will open remote audience comment, period. It remains the strong intent of the city to have public comment regularly included on our agendas. However, the city reserves the right to eliminate or end these public comment periods and/or remove anyone from the meeting at any point if we deem the system as being abused or is no longer suitable to be allowed, to allowing the city to conduct its necessary business. Each speaker will be given five minutes to speak. You'll be called upon by Julie Medzigian, council liaison. Ms. Medzigian will call the speaker's name and unmute the appropriate microphone, which will send an automatic prompt to the speaker. You have been muted. This is the speaker's cue that it's their turn to speak. Please begin your comments by stating your name and city of residence and the topic you are addressing. Speakers should be able to see the timer on the screen. When your time is almost up, please wrap up your comments. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Medzigian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, my name is Julia Medzigian. I will begin first by calling the names of those people that have pre-registered to speak. After I call your name, I will unmute you, and you will have up to five minutes to address council. Please begin by stating your name, city of residence, and your topic. First, I have Diane Dobson. Go ahead, Ms. Dobson. You'll have to unmute yourself.
Julia, this is Diane. If you could unmute me on my phone, I've got a bad, bad service on my...
Okay.
Zoom. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. I apologize for that. So I'm Diane Dobson. I'm a Renton resident, and I come to you tonight, though, as the CEO of the Renton Chamber of Commerce. I was newly hired this year as the CEO, being hired in February just before COVID struck, and it's been nothing less than jumping in with both feet. Learning a new job, understanding my role in action, and then throwing a handful of crises on top to boot. It's been nonstop and exhausting, to say the very least. And I come to you tonight to extend my sincere appreciation and thanks to the city administration and acknowledge some of the work you have done. As we know, COVID-19 is far more than a medical crisis, it's an economic crisis as well. And at the Chamber, we represent over 600 businesses in our community. Businesses as small as mom-and-pop shops, the corporations as big as Boeing, Pujas Sound Energy and Kaiser, as well as nonprofits like Reach, Salvation Army, and the Renton Community Foundation. And their success is our business, and there is no one that hasn't been affected. So to see them impacted the way they have been through COVID has been heartbreaking. To date, we've lost over 40 businesses and organizations, and COVID has been nondiscriminate. From small businesses to big businesses, we never anticipated seeing the doors close on. Your community and economic development team has been outstanding in engaging with not just the Chamber, but the general business community as well. What a wealth of information they have had to stay abreast on. Impacts from the CARES Act, HEROES Act, King County Funding, SBA loans, idle loans, PPP, extensions, and more extensions. Changes that happened minute by minute in some cases. And with each change that comes out, your team is working to stay ahead of the game to find ways to lessen the impact or improve the benefit to our community. There have been permit fees waived, banners ordered and delivered, social media posts and press releases. Your team has been attending meetings on the east side and south side, government briefings and trainings, advocating for the city of Renton and our community, and finding the most contemporary ways for us to stay ahead and stay involved. And now the city has stepped up again in support with the city's small business grant, and we thank you. We thank your teams, and we thank you as an administration for empowering them to do such great things. I also want to thank you for your support for the businesses surrounding the de-intensification facility at the Red Lion. From day one, Mr. Mayor, you reached out with transparent conversation from both the city administration lens, as well as the small business owner in our community. And your words to me were, "We all need to step up and do our part." And you did. And when King County didn't, you did. You communicated with our businesses. You allocated resources to help support the impacts our businesses are facing. You participated and allowed candid conversation with our businesses and our communities who were facing challenges, and challenges they are. One business owner in the immediate vicinity has incurred over $30,000 a month in additional expenses. Businesses are facing damage to their property needing repair, the need for additional security, and we've all heard of a few truly unfortunate criminal situations that will leave the victims scarred and traumatized going forward, to just name a few. And I don't share this to minimize the necessity for the facility in effort to slow the spread of the virus, or any of the positives some of the guests at the facility are experiencing, having what might be the first opportunity toward dignified living in years. It's not to discount any of those things. Week after week as an advocate for our businesses, I attend meetings with King County, and I ask for a mitigation fund and additional support to help offset those impacts our businesses are facing. These additional impacts on top of the COVID devastation they are trying to absorb as well. And week after week, the county tells me they have not taken any steps to that end. So our businesses continue to incur expenses, continue to have their employees and customers impacted, and continue to do their part. Quite frankly, more than their part. But I don't want to dwell on the negative tonight. I came here to highlight just a few of the things your administration is doing in support as our business community is trying to survive and sustain during the wealth of crisis they are facing. And I thank you. Mr. Mayor, like me, you are new to your position, having been elected and begun your term in January, and you jumped right in to learn your role as mayor. And just in learning the new position, I can only imagine how exhausting that must be, especially as two of your administrators have had to retire or step away, and your COO resigned as well. But to couple it with crisis after crisis you've been facing, the tough decisions you've had to make for the safety of our community, and the community leaders who undoubtedly with the greatest of intent are diligent with their approach of expectation and demands of you and pushback for some of those decisions, I'm not going to say I'm sorry. I'm going to say how very proud I am of you, how very proud I am of your administration, your city team, your city council, and the continued approach you're making in some of the toughest times we have ever faced. And thank you. On behalf of the Renton Chamber of Commerce, on behalf of the communities I represent and work with, on behalf of my family that continues to call Renton home, I thank you for what you do and you continue to do for our community.
Thank you very much for your kind words. Um, this is an amazing time we're going through in history, and I'm very, very proud about the people that, that we work with here in the city. We've got amazing individuals that, that come to work every day and do their best to try and help the residents of this community. And it's, it's amazing to watch, especially from this position. So thank you very much for reaching out with your kind words, Diane. Medzigian?
Okay, the next person I have signed up to speak is Nathaniel Mills. Go ahead, Mr. Mills.
I work for T-Mobile, uh, new data, databases, analytics, that sort of thing. And, uh, the whole thing that's been happening with Black Lives Matter lately has been impactful to my family emotionally, I'd say. Luckily, that's all, because we don't really suffer for, from, uh, a lot of the aspects of racial injustice that a lot of people do suffer from. Uh, so I was considering what I could do on that front. And what I tried to do was, in my backyard, you know, try to look at what I could do to get data from our local policing community on use of force, disciplinary action, that sort of thing. Because data's more important than anecdote. I mean, we can always come up with a story that's horrifying or, um, you know, something that, that bolsters our, our anecdotal perspective and, you know, win people over to a side that they're already on. But what I want is to understand what the truth is. And I think that, um, you know, speaking to where I live is the most important thing. Everybody should do that. And so I reached out to the police department. They, they put me in contact, on, in contact with their trainer, which I was, I was thankful for. He was, he was extremely receptive to, uh, to input and, and to inquiry. And I found his, his responses to be, to be great. But they didn't, there wasn't really any data to go with it. It was just sort of a, here's our practices, here's our policies. So I reached out to the, the reporting, you know, sort of departments of the city, the police department. And it's, it's been kind of a struggle to, to get something on this. So I guess what I'm looking for is, has, has the council or, you know, has the mayor's office, has anybody looked into setting up something on sort of a broader scope basis, not just a, a one-off inquiry into this? a one-off inquiry into this sort of thing, but sort of a policy-oriented approach on, you know, what do we get for our investment in policing? You know, what is the, you know, if there's engagement by the police, what does that yield? You know, in terms of impact to our officers, what does that yield? Are they getting enough training? Are they getting enough resources to take them out of the field and decompress and engage with their coworkers in training to understand how they've been impacted personally by their interactions? I guess what I'm looking for is, is there, is there somebody I can be in touch with in regards to all of these things? Because I'm, I've never, I've always been on the sidelines, you know, as a citizen. I've never really been engaged in my community like this. And so what I want to do is make sure I'm doing it in a meaningful way that's not just to make me feel better, that I'm doing something, but actually try to drive toward improvement that hopefully can serve as a model that can scale toward other communities as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. And if you would give your contact information to Ms. Madzigian, somebody will be getting ahold of you. What I would recommend for starters is we just had a presentation from the Renton Police Chief and Committee of the Whole, and you'll be able to find that on our city website for sure by tomorrow. I don't know if it'll be up tonight or not, but a lot of the questions that you're looking for were actually answered today. So, and I do know that one of the things the chief is looking at is ways to present the statistics around use of force. And that's one of the conversations we had. So if you get your information to Ms. Madzigian, we'll make sure that someone gets ahold of you. Thank you. Ms. Madzigian.
Can Kristi see the other speakers?
Yes. Yes, I can. Next with their hand up is, looks like, is it Tammy? Or T-A-M-E-Y?
Maybe. Right. You'll have to unmute yourself, Tammy.
Oh, that was an accident. But I also, Mr. Mills, I also would like to get involved. Sorry.
I'm sorry, can, she can go ahead and speak. Can I get your name and city of residence, please?
My name is Tammy Gaul, and I live in Renton, the Renton Highlands.
Thank you. Please go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say I agree with Mr. Mills, and I also have been looking for a way to get involved. What is going on? I lost my hair. There you go.
Okay. Ms. Gaul, were you finished?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, this is Randy.
Yes, Councilmember Corman.
Yeah, I was going to suggest that, you know, I appreciated you mentioning the Committee of the Whole presentation by our Chief of Police tonight. And council had some questions that we came up with tonight. And we actually put the topic back into Committee of the Whole because we were sure we'd have some more questions. And I guess I just wanted to say to the public, if they watch that and have any specific questions, I'd be interested in hearing those questions, have them emailed to us at council or to the chief, and we could probably address some of those questions. We don't have time for the audience at large to participate in Committee of the Whole, but certainly any one of us council members could bring those questions up when we take the topic up again. So I went for, when council's, you know, done deliberating this, I guess I want to be sure that we feel like we've heard from the public and gotten their suggested questions in as well. So that would be one way to do it, is simply to email the council if they have questions.
Or actually, if they email the administration, I will have the chief reply to them.
That would be outstanding. I didn't want to put you, make you do that, but if you're willing to do that, that would be awesome.
No, I think that's the best way to go, but thank you, Randy. I appreciate that.
Thanks.
Okay, the next person I have signed up or raised hand is Krista Strasba. Go ahead, Krista.
Thank you, Julia. Good evening, everyone. My name is Krista Strasba. I'm a Renton resident, and I'd like to make a short comment tonight about anti-racism and trauma-informed practice. So as many of us know, anti-racism requires that we actively oppose racism. And sometimes this will mean breaking with tradition and with white solidarity, because many of us understand that we all need change from historically white supremacist institutions. So I'd like to make a couple observations based on what I heard tonight at the COW meeting. The white man named Robert Peel, who invented policing as we know it and as Renton has stated support for, was the son of a wealthy cotton mill owner in the United Kingdom. So he would have been about 19 years old when slavery was technically abolished there and very likely benefited directly from enslaved people's labor. He was known even at that time to be a very conservative politician and was likely to bring many of his own beliefs and biases into the engagements that were part of the police chief's slideshow and that our police system continues to build on today. So if we want to be progressive and different, if we want, we're going to need to consider basing policing on ideas that are free from white supremacy and the norms that we are used to. I heard a pretty strong desire on behalf of Renton Police Department for residents to trust the department and their staff, but I still hear no acknowledgement of the very real trauma, both past and present, that makes trust in these situations improbable, if not impossible, especially for our Black Lives Matter residents. I want to thank President Perez for recommending additional conversation. And as a resident, I hope that anti-black racism and trauma-informed practice will be prioritized in that future dialogue. It is very needed. Thank you also to Councilmember Corman, who was just suggesting that residents participate in that conversation. So again, thank you all for your time tonight and participating in this dialogue. I just want to restate that I hope anti-racism and trauma-informed practice will be prioritized in further communication. Thank you.
Okay, the next person I have with a raised hand is Jamie Hyland.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead.
I'm under my, hi, I'm Jacob Hyland. I'm under my wife's Zoom account. I'm not very good at this stuff. I've never been to a city hall or anything like that. I live in the Renton Highlands. I've lived in Renton off and on my whole life. I'm 31 years old. And I just, like, this is like an uncertain time, you know? Like, the whole COVID-19 thing is, like, seems like it's scaring lots of people. And, you know, it had me laid off for a little while. And thank God for unemployment because, you know, that helped me and my family get through. So I'm grateful for that assistance that was given by the government. But I'm just, like, so I have breathing issues. And I tried to go into the Goodwill the other day, and they told me that I couldn't enter the Goodwill without a mask. And it's really hard for me to breathe. I'm just concerned that maybe like when I walk into a Safeway or something, when I'm trying to go get food to eat, I'm going to have to wear this thing that, like, if I had an asthmatic attack, I'd end up falling on the ground. It is so hard to breathe. I'm just really concerned about my livelihood and taking care of my family. And, I mean, I understand that we have online things, but, you know, sometimes it's like you drive home and you need to go to the store. I don't know. I'm just, like, I'm kind of just concerned about the effects of some of these policies that are going on statewide. And I was just wondering the city council's perspective on that. And then, again, I'm also grateful for the parks. Like, that park proclamation is pretty cool. Like, I use the parks all the time with my son and my wife. We love our parks. And also, just because we were, people were talking about it, like, I don't understand, like, racism is obviously terrible. And, like, I want to make sure that everybody's safe. And I think it's cool that our police are saying they're trying to be accountable. But I just wonder what I can do to be somebody that can continue living a life and trying to pursue happiness and, like, raise my children and, you know, keep paying taxes and just knowing that, like, if I call 911, all the services are going to be there and, like, just being free to go to Kulan Park. I mean, that place is amazing. Like, I mean, I'm sure that we've all been to that beach. Like, it's an amazing beach. There's a cool little park that's like a little, like the little side island. I just want to feel like I'll be able to walk around in this world and not have a stigma or a shame because I have breathing problems. So I was just wondering your guys' thoughts on that. And again, I don't really know anything about a city hall or anything like that, so I'm grateful for you guys doing things that I don't understand. So thank you very much. I don't want to mute myself.
Thank you, Mr. Hyland. And if you give Ms. Madzigian your information, we'll have somebody from staff get ahold of you. There is medical exemption cards that are available. I don't have the number right in front of me here, but there is a process that you can go through that, once you have the card, if it's medically necessary to not wear a mask, I believe you can show it to the store and they will, they'll understand at that point. So, thank you. Ms. Madzigian.
Okay, next up is Winter Cashman.
Good evening, city. Mostly, I just wanted to speak today about the Red Lion facility. I'm upset to hear that the city is waiving permits for other businesses during this crisis, but is using permitting and building codes against a hotel and proving outcomes for communities experiencing homelessness. And I'm tired of people claiming without evidence that it's, that crime is linked to the hotel. In my own neighborhood this weekend, there were more crimes than I could count with my neighbors lighting off fireworks. And when I lived behind Cheers, the bars downtown, the police were there almost nightly. But there are several incidents there too, which received regional notice. But when Red Lion helps communities near homelessness, the city attempts to remove them. And I understand that this comparison isn't apples for apples, but it's an example that speaks to the absolute osvers them mentality that our city is having towards these neighbors that we're trying to help. And Renton does not do much for homelessness. And does the city even know if these people in the facility are not from Renton? Because while we're claiming we're doing our part, the last year, Renton reporters stated that there were over 400 students that were experiencing homelessness, and I counted even more families this February as part of the Count Us In program. Many people here don't get the resources they need and are forced to use systems and resources which our county provides, and the city is sitting here and not being part of the solution. And while they claim that they're being, that they're not being NIMBY, you're literally excluding our own community and you're literally trying to remove a facility in our backyard. You want to talk about the help that you're doing for businesses? What are you doing for Red Lion right now? Is this what those owners want? Because as far as I knew, that they were doing a ton for this community, including the luau for the law, including the three-chamber event. And in this conversation we're having right now over racism and equity lens, the city wants to talk about inclusion. But here they are excluding our community, excluding our own businesses. And finally, there's claims that the county isn't working with us. What does that mean? Every time I've contacted our county representatives over this matter, I've gotten a response. And they've even held meetings for groups of people, including myself. And I can't help but notice this trend, whether it's waste infrastructure, whether it's the police inquest process that our city is suing the county and blocking, and now a homeless shelter, that our own citizens are being used as pawns for this petty power of politics by our council president and mayor. And I want to remind them that we vote for our county council too. And I will not be quiet when our city wants to claim equity while being classist, criminalizing a facility which services a plurality of people of color, and now is using businesses, I mean, building codes on a hotel which is owned by people from a Sikh community. Where's the equity lens here? To the rest of our council, I genuinely hope you do more to fight to have our city do the right thing. Evicting homeless people during a global health crisis is unimaginably cruel. Thank you.
Thank you, Winter. Ms. Madzigian.
Next person I have is listed only as Erica. Erica, you can go ahead and start by giving your full name and your city of residence.
Hi, my name is Erica Conway, and I live in the city of Renton. I just want to say thank you for allowing me to be on here today. I have a lot, I did get a chance to hear the police chief, and so I'd like to go back and listen. But as an African-American woman who has an African-American son, and I heard the gentleman say that he just wants to be able to live his life and go to Kulan, I want the same for my son. I want the same for my son and for my family. One of the things that I had to do for my son was to get him a dash cam. My son is 22 years old. He goes to school in Portland, but he does come home. And I had to get a dash cam for my son so that whenever he is stopped, he would have to, he will be able to record himself. One of the things I have not heard was that has the city of Renton or even the police chief sat down and had a conversation with the oldest civil rights organization, the NAACP, to try to get some kind of support or some kind of help? Because I do. When my son comes home, or even when he's in Portland, I fear. I pray that he can make it home. And I know that there's been a lot of incidents in Renton. I actually work in Seattle for the courts, and so I do, I have some concerns with the police department in Renton. And so I just want to know exactly what the city of Renton intends to do and really not just talk about it, but be about it. And I would suggest that someone reach out to the president of the Seattle King County NAACP and try to come up with some ideas, you know, something to help one another, to have that line of communication. And so, thank you. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I intend to get involved, just like I was down there protesting in Seattle, I intend to get involved in Renton. So that's why I started participating in the council. I was uncalled last month in the council meetings. And I really expect you guys to do your job and not talk about it, but actually be about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Conway. Ms. Madzigian.
Okay, next person I have is Joseph. Joseph, if you'll give your full name and your city of residence, you can go ahead. Hi, my name is Joseph Todd and I live in Renton. So the big thing for me is what I really want to understand from the police chief's presentation is why doesn't this plan have targets? There should be, in every job that I've ever had in corporate America, from Boeing to Alaska Airlines and then also at the city of Toluula, your plans always have to have targets on what you're trying to accomplish and you can't just, you can't just do that with anecdotes. They have to be real plans that talk about real things that need to change and the plan that he showed didn't have those. And so I really want to get a better understanding from the police chief and maybe this will be more of a discussion with him where he can give me some of the real details and understanding of where he wants to take the police department on a one-on-one basis, right? Because I just did not see that from the presentation. And so, in the future, what I'd like more is to, is, during those COW discussions, we really need to have, and I know we can't have public comment there, but there really needs to be a more informed conversation before those COW meetings so that when presentations are given, that people can't comment on, that they're informed to the point where you're answering questions that the public is gonna have off of a presentation that really didn't try to speak toward doing some specific things. And specific things means having a citizens oversight committee, trying to do what, you know, having some real numbers around what's equity gonna look like in the police department? Why aren't the offices there more diverse? And then really understanding the training and giving us the real numbers. We have a resident that I was asking about, he wanted to get involved and he wanted to see some data and he should have been able to see that data realistically around all the stuff that's going on across the country around Black Lives Matter. Renton should have that data ready to hand someone to say, hey, if we really are ahead of the curve, here's how we're ahead of the curve and here are the numbers that prove it. But I didn't see any of that, like, just like most presentations when it comes to police departments. It's a lot of, you know, kind of just throwing sticks in the air and not really being held to account of what you really need to accomplish to change and think outside the box and be more innovative around community policing. And when that, and when that presentation has that, then I'll stop talking about it and then I'll support it. But it doesn't have it and I'm really looking for that type of detail. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Todd. I think you must have missed the part, we did have the use of force details were broke out there, but, like I said, this is information that we are working on getting better access to. So, thank you for your input. Julia Madzigian.
Okay, I don't have anybody else with their hands raised. If there's anybody else in the audience that would like to address the council, please use your computer to raise your hand now. If you've called in, you can press star nine. Okay, not seeing anybody else. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Well, I want to say that I do appreciate all the comments from, from all the residents, good and bad, and I know sometimes it's hard to hear, you know, when you're being critiqued, but what I can tell everybody out there is that we do listen to these comments and we do try and address the issues that are brought up. So, you know, nothing gets fixed overnight and the conversation around policing is important. I do think that it's something that we need to continue to work on. I think we have the right chief and deputy chiefs to get the job done and so I look forward to the, to including more residents in the conversation to make sure that we end up with the kind of police department that the entire community could be proud of, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Corman.
Yes, I appreciate those comments very much and if I could just add on, I, you know, I really think the chief is looking for those kinds of inputs and I, I know the chief's intent is to have a presentation that he can, I mean, to have it become a full-fledged plan that can be implemented, that can be measured, that gets us to the next level and, and so, yeah, I very much encourage members of the community that see holes in that plan or that, blind spots or omissions to just forward those in and it sounded like you were receptive to receiving those and I know the chief would incorporate more. So it's a work in progress, I guess I would say and I can tell we're not, you know, we're not done yet, we got a lot to do on it and I think we're all receptive to that, I just want to stress that. Thank you.
Well, and even to take it a step further, I mean, the chief has made it perfectly clear that we worked for a lot of years to create relationships and build community and have the police department have relationships with all of our communities and basically that was all erased in eight minutes and we're really starting over from, you know, the zero mark and building from there. And so although the presentation feels incomplete, I think that we can be proud that we're starting at a good place, but that's not the final place, that's just where we're starting and how we're gonna move forward, so. Okay, next up is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council, President Perez.
I move the council concur with the consent agenda as published minus item F.
Second. Okay, the move that the council concur with the consent agenda minus item F, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay.
Mr. Mayor? So the item A is revenue neutral for the city, so it simply moves federal funding from the South 43rd Street to the William and Walmsley Avenue project. With that, I move that the council concur with item F.
I second. Okay, it's been moved by Council President Perez, seconded by Councilmember Corman, that the council concur with item F of the consent agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. Next up is unfinished business. Council President Perez.
Not finished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Van.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Benedetti.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
And Councilmember Corman.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Wow, I think that's a first in my time. Okay, next up is legislation, we have one resolution.
Okay, the resolution is regarding an application for a grant for a fish barrier removal. Resolution of the City of Renton, Washington authorizing the submission of an application for grant funding assistance for a Bryan Abbott Fish Barrier Removal Board project to the Recreation and Conservation Funding Board as established by RCW 77.95.160 for the Panther Creek Barrier Removal Talbot Road South Project.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor? Council President Perez.
Sorry, I move the resolution, I move to adopt the resolution as read.
I second. Okay, it's been moved by Council, President Perez, seconded by Councilmember Corman, that the council adopt the legislation, or the resolution as read. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. We are on to new business. Council President Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, July 13, 2020, at 5:30, we will have the Committee of the Hall via video conference and we have now two items on the agenda. One is COVID-19 impacts update and the second will be the continuation of the police policies and engagement discussion that we have today. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Van.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. For community services, we don't have anything, but for, as vice chair of the finance committee, we will be having a meeting on July 13 at 3:00 PM via video conference and the topics on the agenda are, one, 2020 second quarter budget amendment and fee schedule update; two, city clerk office reorganization; three, BJA coronavirus emergency funding; four, stormwater facility retrofit grant; and five, vouchers. And I also wanted, if I may, to take the opportunity to thank our residents who are speaking our community to give us their honest feedback and I think that's one of the many ways and especially the important way for our council to, you know, be able to have the opportunity to listen to them, so I encourage them to continue to work with the city, the council and make Renton a better place. So thank you, everyone, for commenting tonight.
Okay, Councilmember Benedetti.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor. And like Councilmember Vaughn, I'd like to thank our residents for coming and speaking. I recognize the awkwardness of this format and how difficult it can be to especially, you know, master some of these technologies and feeling those barriers and I hope that this sets a precedent of continued involvement in our community and that these folks continue to participate and also join us when we are able to, once again, be on the dais.
Set off. Okay, Councilmember O'Halloran.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember McGurven.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Corman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I need to announce a Planning and Development Committee meeting for July 13th, it's a Monday, at 4:15 PM. It's a video conference. There's five items on the agenda. The items are the Shoreline Master Program, docket number 15, the 2020 flood insurance rate maps adoption, housing action plan, and emerging issues and CED. And that's all, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, what's the wish of the council?
I'll adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Perez, seconded by Councilmember Corman, that we adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you all, we'll see you soon.
Bye-bye.